The Commissioners would like me to dedicate this meeting tonight to a former county employee, Jim Cochran, who has recently passed. So we're dedicating this meeting tonight to Jim Cochran. I'd like to share a verse from Philippians, Chapter 2, verses 3 and 4. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit; rather, in humility, value others above yourselves, not looking to your own interest, but to each of you the interests of the others. So this passage calls for selfless love and consideration for others' needs. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you that we are here tonight to consider the needs of the community of others in this county. Help us, Father, to have wisdom as to know the best way to move forward as you've given us this privilege to serve others. In Jesus' name we ask it and pray. Amen.
Hey, good evening Commissioners. My name's Trey Balance, and I'm here today to speak about something profoundly important to the health and future of Haywood County: the power of the 12-step programs and the urgent need for a dedicated 12-step recovery clubhouse in our community. A recovery clubhouse serves as a central hub to those seeking to maintain sobriety and build a strong support system. The clubhouse will host multiple 12-step programs and will be run by volunteers from the recovering community. My purpose today is to respectfully request that you allocate a portion of the opioid settlement funds to either build a new 12-step recovery clubhouse or acquire an existing building for this vital purpose. To understand why this is so critical, I need to share a piece of my own story. In 2012, after 10 years of sobriety, I relapsed. For three long devastating years, I spiraled, burning my life and my family's life to the ground. Once I started using, I simply could not stop. With that came annihilation of everything worthwhile in my life, including the most important relationships of my family members. By the end of 2015, after cycling in and out of jail with multiple felonies, I finally landed in a local 12-step meeting clubhouse. My head was held low. I felt utterly hopeless and useless. I truly could not see how my life could ever be worth living again. But in those meetings, surrounded by people who had walked my path, I found a lifeline. They saw a bright future for me, one I could not see at the time. They knew that if I was willing to trust God and work the 12-step program, my life would be meaningful again, and they were right. There's not a better place to restart your life. As many of you know, the Waynesville Triangle Club, which served our community for years, was asked to vacate its last location during COVID. Unfortunately, after that, we could not find an affordable new space, and the club ultimately dissolved. Now, a new nonprofit, The Camel Club, a 501(c)(3) has been established, and it desperately needs a permanent home. A dedicated 12-step recovery clubhouse in Haywood County would be an immeasurable gift to our entire community. It's a place where individuals learn how to live sober and find a sense of belonging that is crucial to breaking the cycle of addiction. It's a place where the hopeless find hope and lives are reshaped. My story's not unique. I could fill this entire room with people who have stories just as miraculous as mine. Now, think about that. How many places do you know that can produce story after story of success? From addiction, jail, homelessness, broken families transformed into public members of society. I can't think of anywhere in the world that has a better track record and evidence than that. 12-step programs are crucial for long-term recovery. It's pointless to get sober if it cannot be sustained. Commissioners, we have a unique opportunity. That's it. We have a unique opportunity to make a tangible, lasting impact. The most impactful way to invest the opioid settlement money is directly into the lives that is devastated. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hey, thank you. My name is Will Polly. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's an honor to be here. My name is Will Polly. I live full-time at 53 Talon Court. It's an honor and privilege to be here today with you. I'm a registered nurse who specialized, who has specialized in the care of patients with mental health conditions and co-occurring drug and alcohol addictions. I'm also a certified addictions counselor through the state port of Florida. I've worked in this field in varied capacities for 30 years. In addition, my, in my professional experience, I also have personal experience. My family suffered from the disease of alcohol and drug addiction. Like my father and multiple other family members, I am afflicted with this progressive, destructive, yet treatable disease. I've been clean and sober for over 36 years. I personally experienced the benefits of treatment: multifaceted assessment, detox, education, treatment, therapy, both individual and group. And these are all important and powerful tools to be utilized by the recovering person. A path of recovery comes into view during this process. And in the paramount importance of community support through peer association and fellowship is experienced at that time, usually toward the end of treatment, you get introduced to that. Following discharge and the implementation of a recovery plan, in most cases, individuals continue to seek ongoing community support. And my personal experience is that I found that permanent brick-and-mortar form of recovery and support in the, in the counties on which I got sober, which was in Florida, by going to a sober clubhouse. It provided a sense of permanence, reliability, and a sense of community and stability that I very, very much needed. When I got out of treatment, people frequently will hand you a phone, a phone number or something abstract and say, "You need to get in touch with these people." It's a lot, it was very comforting to me to know that there was a place that I could suit up and show up and find that support. In these places, these sober clubs, I went from being someone who was in need of their help to being able to support others. And by helping others, I was able to help myself. It's in my, it's my heartfelt hope that, that we place Haywood County in the best, best footing for success in addressing, in addressing this addiction issue or problem. Addiction is a community illness, not just a family illness, and it's pervasive and destructive in many ways: economically, socially, spiritually, and mentally. It's widespread. I hope you support a move to, to support some sort of sobriety club. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Tom Murphy. Welcome.
My name's Tom Murphy. I live up in Winchester Creek on Walker and the Hills. And I'm here on behalf of The Camel Club Limited Liability Corporation, a 501(c)(3) firm for the purpose of establishing a recovery facility/clubhouse for the various recovery groups in Haywood County. These groups include Alcoholics Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous, and Al-Anon, among others. I'm gonna hit you with some numbers here. Haywood County population's around 63,000. 8,000 of those are under 12 years old. According to the 2023 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, 28.9 million people ages 12 and older had alcohol use disorder in the past year. So there are around 55,000 adults in Haywood County. Using the NA, using the, the national statistics, and, and there could be as many as 6,000 people in Haywood County struggling with drug and alcohol. 6,000! And each one of those people has a circle of influence between 12 and 20. So think about the people surrounding that alcoholic or that addict. How many people's lives are affected? Not to mention how many people on Route 40. All right, think about this. And I just wanna say, so that would be 30,000 people conservatively that could be affected by the number of alcoholics and addicts in this country, in this county. Now, I would think, ask you, do you know anybody that has an alcohol or drug problem? Do you know somebody that has an alcohol or drug problem that's been to detox or rehab or jail? Do you know anybody that has been through that experience, came out and still drank and drugged? You know, the rehabs and the jails are great because they, they separate the addict and the alcoholic from the substance for a long enough period of time. But that alcoholic or addict will always go back to using unless he finds a way to find long-term security, sobriety, which is what 12-step programs offer. We don't teach you how to get sober. We teach you how to live sober. And we need a place in this county. We need it. Where people can come. The county's growing. We, you know, there's a lot of people in those nice houses up on the hills who probably have the problem too, but they don't know where to find us. They don't know how to, how to get in touch with us. I mean, there's a phone number, but there's no permanent place where they can come, where there's a sign on the door that says Camel Club. Come in and get sober. Come in and get a cup of coffee. So what I'm, I'm proposing is that we have something established in the county that will have some permanence, a permanent address. We've already been from Triangle Club to the Grace Hospital, to the county building, to the coffee shop, to, you know, we keep getting moved around because people, we're the first ones they ask to leave. You know, Grace Church is, well, we want to put the Boy Scouts in there, so we got thrown out. Triangle Club on Miller Ave got, we got thrown out of there because they built a wine shop next to it. I mean, can't make this up, right? And, but anyways, this is, these are the things, this is a vital need for this, for this community. I mean, if it wants to grow and live and be the greatest county in the earth, like it's becoming, we need certain structure.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, the next person to sign up to speak is Joey Hess. Welcome, Joey.
Hi, my name is Joey Hess. I'm here to speak on behalf of The Camel Club. Sure, I don't have all the statistics everybody have. All I have is my own personal story. And, you know, as an addict and alcoholic, we had 10 years in the penitentiary because of drugs and alcohol, six and a half years on the street, homeless. You know, medically assisted programs, detoxes and all that stuff, they're great. They, they open the door for what recovery is, but it's not substantial enough for what recovery can do on a lifetime. You know, I didn't find recovery. I found recovery in those places, but it wasn't, it never stuck. Every time I'd been to a jail, detox, rehab, or anything else like that, I always ended up back on the street and ultimately relapsing. But I was welcomed into community, a 12-step community here in Haywood County, and for the first time in my life, it stuck. You know, I didn't have a problem growing up as a faith in God or anything like that. What I didn't have was a lot of evidence of God in my life. And this 12-step program put it in my life. Right now, I have over 30 months of continuous sobriety. My sobriety date's February 6, 2023. I went to the Boston Center here in Haywood County. However convenient that is, it didn't stick, you know? And I couldn't find recovery. I wasn't, I wasn't accepted the way I felt natural for it. And this program, and, you know, I've been to other communities that have a 12-step clubhouse and just the camaraderie and how it just welcomes me in and makes me feel a part of something. I think that if we had a 12-step club here locally, that it would be instrumental in recovery in these places. You know, it's benefited my life tremendously in 30 months of sobriety. Like I said, I went from homeless on the street for six and a half years to, I work a full-time job, you know? I got, I get welcomed into homes I never thought I'd even see the doorstep of, you know, and it's because of 12-step recovery and Alcoholics Anonymous. If I hadn't had this program, I don't know where I would be in life. I got a full-time job. I have my own place now, car, license, I mean, the whole nine. And it was all because of just the community of 12-step recovery. And I think a clubhouse would be extremely beneficial to recovery here in Haywood County. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jis. Okay, next person signed up to speak is Ron Nuzo. Welcome, Ron.
Thank you. My name's Ron Nuzo. Been a Haywood County resident since 2011. Got here as quick as I could. In the last few years, I've noticed a lot of trash on our roads. I don't know how else to put that, other than there's a lot of trash on our roads. And it seems to be coming from two places. One is, unfortunately, people who just think it's okay to roll your window down and throw your stuff out the window, like, you know, from your McDonald's or your fast food restaurants. Another that I see a lot of is, is beer cans. 98%. I go down, up and down Rack Loop Cove Road because I get mad, and so I go and I take my side-by-side and I just start picking up garbage. 98% of what I get in my bags when I pick it up is fast food, garbage, and beer cans. I don't know what we can do about that, but that's not really what I'm here about. I'm here about, and, and I'm gonna ask you, just yes or no, have you seen an influx of garbage bags, like household garbage bags, that have somehow ended up on our streets and our highways? Yes? You seen that? And then they get hit, and now your trash is everywhere, and we know where it's gonna go. It's gonna hit the sewers, it's gonna, it's gonna hit our creeks and our rivers and our streets. And it's just, it's unsightly, and, and there's no real need for it. I mean, alls we have to do is secure, and anybody who's, it's just people who are driving trucks, of which I do, and, and, and open trailers. And it's as simple as just securing your garbage. I mean, if I have, like, you know how recyclables are light, you know? So that bag is light, that bag might fly out. Well, gosh, put a five-pound rock on it, you know? And now, all of a sudden, that's not gonna fly out. It's simple. We got a lot of rocks in this county. It's an easy fix, and yet I'm seeing, Asheville Road, somebody else was just saying the other day, man, it was, it was horrific. It was just all over the road. And, and it's like, I was so offended by it, and I'm like, okay, who do you call? Because, well, by the time you call somebody and they decide whose jurisdiction it is and get somebody out there and get it on the docket, it's everywhere. It's everywhere. So I went home and I got my truck and I got my stuff and I went and I cleaned it up. But by the time I got done, it was right there on Asheville Road. The whole sewer drain, that all this garbage had flown out of this bag, was completely blocking it. Sorry. I don't know what the answer is, folks. I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm a county guy who wants to live the rest of my life here, and I just feel like we're just getting buried in garbage. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. The next person to sign up to speak is CJ Deering. Welcome, CJ.
Hi, I'm CJ Deering. I am a recovering alcoholic and drug addict. My sobriety date is October 15, 1978. That's a long time ago. I'm the person, you may remember, there was a recovery program at the jail under Greg Christopher. I'm the person that created that drug and alcohol program, along with my partner, Rick Marvin, who doesn't live here anymore. We were there for five years. We've had great success with that. When the new sheriff came in, he eliminated the program, and I went over to Pathways. I worked there for two years as an advocate, which was a different population, but certainly there was a lot of drug and alcohol issues, you know, in homelessness, as we know. After they lost funding for my position, I went over to REACH, which is the domestic violence and sexual assault program here in town, which of course, again, has a lot to do with drug and alcohol abuse. The number one, the most domestic violence occurs on a certain day, which is Super Bowl Sunday, which I just kind of find that interesting, but that happens to be the truth. The, our local emergency room saw over 600 opioid ODs last year and 4,512 visits for anxiety, mood disorders, psychotic disorders, and 360 potential suicides. Also, in 2022, 32% of deaths in Haywood County were drug-related. So this is a really serious problem. I started, I got sober in Los Angeles, and we had clubhouses everywhere. When I moved here, I noticed there weren't really any, there wasn't much going on as far as 12-step programs and whatever. So I started, I rented a space next to Bosu's Wine Shop, very convenient, and we started a clubhouse. And we were there for seven and a half years before we lost our lease. Since then, as you've heard, we've really not found a good place to, you know, to land. And what I want to tell you is, there's, the, the, the marker for addiction is loneliness. And if it weren't for the camaraderie, the support, the friendships that I've made in Alcoholics Anonymous, talking to people that understood what I was talking about, I wouldn't be sober today. Rachel Wertzman has a TED Talk, if you're interested, on neuroscience. She's a neuroscientist on brain chemistry and how, what it has to do with loneliness and addiction. A clubhouse gives us a place to have a Christmas party on Christmas when people have been, you know, tossed out of their families because of their addiction, whatever. We can come together and create a community to support their addiction. Ooh, that is a scary thing. Okay, anyway, fund the clubhouse, please. We spent so much money on drug court, we've, we've graduated four people. $250,000, two years, four people. We can do way better than that with a lot less money. Thanks.
Thank you, CJ. Okay. Okay, that's all that we've signed up to speak. I appreciate everybody's comments on that. We'll move to constituent concerns. I am familiar with the 12-step recovery program, if you will. So actually, I've kind of gone through it. So it is a great program, if it's the same one I'm thinking it is. So in fact, Orchard Church does this, does, do they? Okay. Okay. Well, so, and I- Okay. Yeah, okay. Does anybody else have any constituent concerns?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to say something about that. I've been in a record business all these years and retired, and I've, I've seen a lot of these people go through this stuff and had even had it involved one of my family members. And I can't see the best help to get these people to stay off of drugs and stuff is their friends that are off of it when they get together. The worst problem we found back when it was real bad was people, if they went to rehab or went to jail, when they came back out, they would get with the old crowd, and it would keep them going. And in my opinion, this is a great thing because when you get people that are, that have, you know, had been through it, and they get there and they, they help each other stay off of it and stuff. So I'm for any of that, because I've been, I mean, there's great people that gets hooked on this stuff. So I mean, well, look at Trey, one of the best carpenters in this country. And, and, you know, and I really appreciate, but I've seen it through the whole time, you know, I've seen him get, get through it and get back to doing what he's always done. And the more people we can get back like that, I think is a great thing. And we, we can't never get too many programs. You, you were talking about the, the recovery courts and stuff, that, every one that we can get off of it, I think is, is a win. But something like this right here, where they, friends are friends, they, you trust your friends more than somebody that's not a friend, you know? You know what I mean? And I, I feel like this right here would be a great opportunity to get a lot of people off of it and keep them off of it. The hardest part's keeping them off of it, and I, I, like I say, I've been in a record business, and I've called about everybody in here's vehicles and stuff, and, and I've met great people, and I always try to treat them the same as I did everybody else. And I appreciate what y'all are doing and trying to keep them straight. I've saw it from start to finish, and, and I really appreciate it, and I'm behind you all the way.
Okay. Okay. And then as far on the trash, I know a lot of the bags that you see on the road are from Helene. I don't know if that fellow's still here, but from Helene. It seems like, I've noticed that, I think, especially out in Bethel, the Bethel area, people continue to put trash out at the road, and they really just need to take it to the, I'm not sure why, why that is. I know the DOT spends a lot of money picking up trash. And if we know roads, if you could contact the county manager's office and let us know which roads that you're seeing, maybe it's a recurring problem, we can get the DOT to maybe focus on those streets or roads, Brian, if we can. I know one, at one time, we had commissioned for a clean county, but I think they've kind of stopped doing that. But it was concerned citizens that were organized going out and doing pickups about once doing pickups about once a quarter, I think. Once a month? Okay, once a month. And that, I don't think they're doing that anymore, so. Okay. I, I had another thought on that twelve step, but, oh, I've got, is there a point person for this that, in your group? Is it you CJ? Okay. So we've got your phone numbers, and I, I wanna talk to some of our staff and see if there's anything we could do, because you mainly just need a space, sounds like, a permanent space that you can count on, and not have to be at somebody else's whim, if you will. Okay. And that's, that's probably what's, what, what you're running into. It's like you have a space and then something else comes along, so. But this is very important, and, and I agree with you. It's a great, it's a great program. It kind of flies under the radar because, you know, but, but I know it's well-attended, uh, every time. So, every time y'all have that. So, and so you're not doing it at all right now, correct? Okay. Okay, alrighty. Okay, well. Okay. Okay, I remember. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Just one thing I would like to say is, I know that it took a lot of courage for each one of y'all to come and speak, especially here in public, to admit you was addicted at one time, and, uh, now you're clean. So, I just wanna say personally, I appreciate that. You know, again, it takes a lot of courage and strength, uh, to come up like that. Heck, I get nervous speaking in public anyways, let alone having an issue or a problem and then coming up and speaking. So, uh, I'll continue to pray for each one of y'all, and, and maybe there is something that we can do, you know, to find them a, a permanent spot, but it's something we'll discuss. But, anyway, thank each one of y'all for coming.
Yeah, and that's, that was, that was what was on my mind, you know. I appreciate, I know it took a lot of courage to get up here and say what y'all did, and I appreciate that. And, uh, and God bless you for that, because it does take a lot of courage.
How, how do you, is there someplace that we could announce that you have scheduled meetings? You said you're kind of meeting in different places. Is there some way that we could direct people until there is maybe a more permanent spot?
Well, the only sort of, uh, safe spot we have right now is behind the County Church. First, we have a Methodist church, I have that long, I have this, so way, way down on Baptist Street, there's a room there, and we need, we sort of lobby that room, so I think it's, the classrooms, but there's a big open space, so they allow us to do that.
But do you have a website or a Facebook page where you have different locations you announce?
I think you go to AA.org, and then they'll write, if you need to write.
Okay, that's-
The permanent space is just on the place you go, you know, like, um, you know, it's like a new one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I'm just gonna repeat, because people watching can't hear, I should've had you come up to the mic, but. So AA.org, you can go to that website, and you can find our area, and it'll say where you can maybe meet. And you are meeting behind First Methodist Church here in Waynesville. So, uh, so you do have a little bit, you're just, we'd like a, probably a bigger space, probably, and, and more permanent. Okay. Okay, very good. Okay. The next order of business will be administrative agency reports and presentations, but we don't have any of that. Does anyone have a discussion or, or adjustment to the agenda? Okay. I'll move to consent agenda. We have eight items on the consent agenda. A lot of these, even though they're big numbers, they're just rollovers from last year, just to kind of let y'all know. So we're just rolling that over from last year, so we can get them into this year's budget. So does anybody have any questions on any of those? There's eight items. Okay, here none, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agendas presented.
I'll make that motion, second.
Okay. Tommy made the motion, Brandon second. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, the next order of business will be a regular agenda, and the first item is to request approval of Mountain Projects Developer Agreement under HUD's CDBG Disaster Recovery Grant through North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency. Approval of budget ordinance in the amount of two million, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and approval for the county manager to execute all related documents. And our community and economic development manager, Hannah White, is here to speak to that. Hey, welcome Hannah. Good seeing you.
Good to see y'all, evening commissioners. So, if y'all remember, back in November, Incor came to y'all to talk about moving the remaining funds left over from Tropical Storm Fred to Rapid Recovery, so that way we could respond to Helene and have some broader activities included in that. We got the approval from HUD back in February. Around that time, Mountain Projects actually came to us, and they had concerns about other sources of funding with the project due to changes in administration. Um, we discussed moving the project to Rapid Recovery, but ultimately decided to keep it in the Affordable Housing Development Fund it was initially in, um, because there was still housing involved. Um, so with this project, it's mainly gonna focus on infrastructure and have a minimum of nine units, but up to eighteen units. All the units go to your LMI, so your low to moderate income households, and any lots that they don't develop with the houses, they still need to be deeded to the LMI households. Um, and I have an income chart at the end. We want to be, be conservative, knowing all the changes going on, just in case other funding was impacted, our side of the project could still be completed, AKA we wouldn't have to return any money, hopefully. Um, we received the final paperwork we needed in May, and Mountain Projects Board approved the changes and the updated developer agreement in mid-June. So the budget timeline is if everything goes smoothly, we can hopefully start the environmental and, um, site plans in this quarter, and then they will hopefully be finished by the end of twenty twenty-seven. Um, they asked two-point-five of the ten million total of the project, and we are able to use the CGBDR, tongue twister, funding to complete a full site plan and do the environmental review, and Incor's doing the environmental review for us. And then the conditions, um, the restrictions we talked about, that all the lots have the affordability period for the LMI individuals, and there'll be some restrictive covenant, so, you know, houses look cohesive that get developed, um, outside exterior spaces need to stay neat and look like tidy. So these are the existing funding sources. Dogwood, um, provided a grant to help with the acquisition of the property, and also do, uh, Phase One Environmental. And then they use the USDA Self-Help Housing, so the Smart Equity Program, where the homeowners actually help construct the housing. And then the USDA Self-Help Program is helping fund admin capacity, a construction supervisor, assistance, training, and equipment. These are who we received the letters of support from way back when we got the initial application. And this is the, um, income chart for Haywood County. So the low to moderate is the eighty percent and below, so you can see that figure in the blue shaded areas. And then, um, the HUD MIM income for Haywood County for twenty twenty-five is eighty-eight, five hundred, and that's for a family of four. And that's it. Any questions that y'all might have?
You might have anything on that? And the, the grant came from?
Um, so it is through Incor, so the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, but like, started at the federal level, they extended to the state, and Haywood County was in that Tropical Storm Fred disaster area.
Okay, great. Okay. So we're getting it mainly because of the hurricane again. Okay, great. Okay. Any questions, anybody? Go ahead.
Saz here, he, he probably doesn't want me to have you call him up, but we've been working on this with Mountain Projects, it seems like, for ten years, so he may have a few comments.
Did you wanna make a comment or anything?
She, she did a good job, and I've, I've got Maggie Leff, which is our spokesman for housing director here, too.
Okay.
We've worked hand-in-hand with the county, and our board is committed, and we're ready to go forward.
Okay, alright.
Sorry, Mountain Projects will be the agency that, um, I guess directs the self-equity part of it, is that correct?
Yeah.
And they've always done such a good job in the past, that-
Yeah, actually-
Good partnership.
They build more houses than Habitat does, actually, in the county, by far, by far. So, yeah. So just think Habitat, if you think, you know, it's similar, very similar. Okay. Can I entertain a motion? Will you approve it?
I'll make that motion.
Case for a second. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you Hannah. Okay, item number two is to request approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of fiscal year twenty twenty-six fleet replacement vehicles from the North Carolina Sheriff's Association Procurement Program, per exception to competitive bidding requirements, for a total of six hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. Welcome Chris, Chris Boyd, our deputy county managers, to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, I can read the request again, but I'd like to just add a couple of comments to that instead of reading the request again. We'll be looking to buy model year twenty-five vehicles. We're still currently in that model year. I, I can hear it echoing. So we're, we're trying to get in early on the tail end of model year twenty-five, instead of potentially having an increase for model year twenty-six. So we were able to, um, work with the Sheriff's Procurement Program and Parks Forward to be able to do this. So I'm requesting a, approval, to the exception of the competitive bid, for fifteen of the sixteen vehicles budgeted for fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay. And we already budgeted this, so. This is in our budget?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? Okay, is there a motion that we can approve item two of the regular agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
It's that, it's that month off we've had, more than a month, actually.
I can't remember.
Yeah. Okay, item three is to request approval of a resolution accepting session law twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three, offer up to one hundred thousand dollars for Hurricane Helene water and wastewater recovery efforts, assuring compliance with award offer and authorizing county manager to execute required documents. And Assistant County Manager for Recovery and Resiliency, Garen Bradish, and Recovery and Resiliency Grants Administrator, Nicole Smiley. Welcome, guys.
Good evening Commissioners. Uh, in the months following, Helene Bryant came to me, and we met about building a Recovery and Resiliency Team. So I want to take this opportunity to, right now, to introduce Nicole, who came on as our grants administrator, and has been working on, uh, looking through numerous grants. And this is, uh, an open-door, first-time opportunity for us to provide future funding through DEQ. So I'll let Nicole talk.
Thanks, Garen. I'm Nicole Smiley. I'm the grants administrator for the Recovery and Resiliency Team, and we are excited to have the opportunity for, um, up to a hundred thousand dollars through the Division of Water Infrastructure. Um, and this is part of our Helene Recovery for the county, and we have, um, many partners, the towns, sanitary districts, and Lake Dunlop Luska Assembly, that are partners with us for this project. And it's really, like Garen said, hopefully will result in future projects, um, but looking at how to build our resiliency, um, and preparedness as a county, um, looking at shared equipment, so generators, things like that, um, looking at, uh, damage and any failures that we had to water and wastewater infrastructure, and then looking at inter-local agreements and, um, interconnections, so backups for those things. And, like I said, hopefully it will identify future projects for us.
We have any questions about that? Okay. Okay, thank you Nicole, and Garen. This is, alright, can we have a motion to approve item three? Okay, for a second. Okay, anybody have any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Item number four is to request approval of a grant project ordinance in the amount of sixteen million dollars appropriated in an additional eleven million of fiscal year twenty-six fund balance for revision of not-to-exceed agreement with SDR for debris removal related to Helene. Funds to be reimbursed by FEMA. Requesting approval for county manager to execute any necessary documents, and Deputy County Manager Chris Boyd and Finance Director Christian Owen. So, is Christian here? Christian's going with Chris, too.
I think she's gonna let me do this one. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As we know, we've worked with debris for, I don't know, the last twenty years of my career here, seems like, at least the last five. Um, we, we continue to move forward, and we continue to make strides. Um, one of the things that we did not do back in April, when this board made a decision to go with SDR for waterway removal, we did not appropriate additional fund balance. We were waiting on estimates from Debris Tech for what that was gonna be. So we, we moved forward with those estimates. Uh, we quickly saw those estimates escalate into ten, twenty, thirty million dollars. Uh, so realizing that was something that we didn't want to have to carry the burden for in Haywood County, we moved to the North Carolina Emergency Management SMART Program, which handed off the waterway debris removal and the private property debris removal programs to the state. We were able to convert that over on May twenty-seventh. It took us a little time to, to get that done, but we did. So we are left with filling the gap from the time we approved the waterway debris removal in April, until we were able to hand it off to the state. This request is to add additional, um, money from fund balance to the total value, and to approve the not-to-exceed dollar amount of sixteen million dollars in order to cover that timeframe of April and May. I, I'll stop there and wait for questions. I see Tommy looking at me like he has a-
Well, no, uh, county manager has briefed all of us, I, I believe, on this topic. Uh, it's, it's a very huge number. And, uh, we're, uh, we're moving forward, like you say, on cleaning up, and we're trusting FEMA to reimburse us on these funds.
Yes, sir. And that, so the, the thing that-
I guess what I should say is, I'm looking at you, not like I don't know what you're talking about, because we've had extensive discussions about this, and the county manager's been, been very good to brief probably all of us, uh, about this agenda item. And, uh, you know, it, it's a monumental task that everyone in the county has seen, and they continue to see, you know, what we're up against. So, uh, yeah, this is another hoop we gotta jump through, and, and hopefully FEMA is gonna come forward with the reimbursement of these funds.
There's no guarantee. I don't think anyone can make that guarantee. However, we do have approval, approvals from FEMA for those packages submitted with those dollar amounts as the estimates prior to us removing that. So we do have some, some certainty that FEMA has approved this, um, before we actually did the work. It doesn't mean we're absolutely guaranteed, but, but I, I feel good knowing that we had that approval. So, along those lines, um, Mr. Long, I'd, I'd like to also add, just for informational purposes, in the waterway debris removal for Haywood County, as of last week, um, the debris removal had occurred on approximately nine hundred thousand linear feet of waterway, for approximately eighty-two thousand cubic yards of vegetative debris. And that, the estimate is roughly one-point-two-five to one-point-five million cubic yards of waterway debris. So we're, we're still moving, we're actively working. Uh, the, the folks at SDR communicate with us two, three times a week. Uh, so we, we're hopeful that we can get to the end of this- So we're hopeful that we can get to the end of this and get it done in the summer without another event this fall.
Well, I'm like you, Mr. Boyd, I'm tired of these flood events. We've been through four of them in 20 years. Well, right at 21, but, yeah. This is just another step we've got to take.
Yes, sir.
When will they be finished, do you think? Do they have any idea?
That's a speculation, hoping to be finished, I think, by mid to late September.
Oh, okay.
But that's the hopeful part. I think they're running, last week they were running 10 crews, the week before that they were running 13 crews, so these folks are working, and most of them are working seven days a week. So while we don't know for sure, I think that's the goal, is to be finished by the end of September.
Most of the hurricanes seem to have come through in September, except for the late-August one that we had with Fred, but... So maybe we can get, it sounds like most of it's kind of being gotten, I guess.
At least a lot of it.
Are the towns, they're doing that separately, like Clyde and Waynesville?
They did right-of-way debris separately. The waterway debris numbers are all inclusive under one program. Municipalities did not do that separately.
They didn't want?
They did not do that separately. Waterway is all-inclusive of one operation under one contract.
On that, the 16 million there, does that include that, where we had that emergency meeting and done the, what did we do then, 7.5 million?
Five.
Emergency meeting?
It includes the five that was initially appropriated in the contract of not-to-exceed with SDR.
But didn't we do 7.5 million?
Not for debris. I think you did 7.5 million total for emergency response, but there was only 5 million for debris removal.
All right, I just wanted to clear that up in case somebody has.
Chris, just a...
As we're talking about debris, it's important that this is the emergency waterway debris cycle. When we're wrapping up, that's just that part. We haven't received funding for EWP. Remember, that's the more long, drawn-out, maybe a more complete cleanup. So we're working with SDR on that, but the EWP program's not been funded or has a green light, so just keep that in mind.
That was my question. I was getting ready to say or comment, I guess, this is just for the waterway cleanup, not the EWP part, so...
Yes.
Hopefully, we'll see some funding for that eventually, but it looks like some surrounding counties, I think, were hitting it a little harder and getting everything that they could get, but unfortunately, we're dealt with what we got, so... Anyway, just a comment that we still have the EWP part that I hope we get funding for.
Any else? Okay, can we have a motion to approve item four?
So moved.
Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, next is item five, is to request approval of a budget amendment for solid waste, $232,000 to appropriate fund balance for land purchase at 177 Recycle Road in Clyde, and approval for county manager to execute any necessary documents. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, again. This is a parcel of property, actually two parcels by a pin, that totals almost six acres on Recycle Road. It's the location of the Jones Cove Convenience Center. Back in late winter, the current owner, BV Hedrick Gravel and Sand Company, made a decision to liquidate this property from their holdings. We've had a lease with them for some time for the location of our convenience center. This property even joins our property at the Murph. There's several acres of very usable land. We've had it cleared, we've done some looking, some questions, we've had some things evaluated. So I'm asking for the ability to allocate funds to purchase this piece of property for Haywood County Solid Waste.
Anybody have any questions about that? This is coming out of the fund balance of the solid waste?
Solid waste.
Okay.
I will say that Commissioner Rogers and I said on that committee, and this is a land purchase that came our way that was extremely in advantage to the county. It's down next to the Murph, and as you say, you know, I'm having trouble hearing, and I guess everybody else is, I don't know if that's working correctly, but the owner, the previous owner, many of you probably seen that shaker building on that rail siding out there above the Murph, that's parked, that butts up to it. And the company was a sand company, and they've kind of, like you say, they decided to liquidate those assets and contacted us, so we're very fortunate, I think, to get that property that joins that facility, so we all were in tremendous agreement to go ahead and move forward with this.
It does offer us opportunities in the future if we need to do some expansion to the convenience center or to the Murph. Now we own the connecting parcel, and we're very lucky that they offered it to us before they put it on the market for sale.
Okay. All right, will someone make a motion to that?
I'll make it.
Item five. Okay, is there a second? Okay, any discussion at all? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, item number six is to request approval of budget amendment, facilities and maintenance, $7,860 to appropriate fund balance for contract with McGill for engineering for the Justice Center buffer tank. Project was approved and budgeted in fiscal year '25 but not completed. So Christian, you are up.
I'm here the rest of the evening, it looks like.
Okay.
Yes, if you have any specifics about engineering for a buffer tank, I will defer to Facilities Director Tim Sisk, but it was budgeted in FY '25. We did not get the contract in place before the fiscal year end, so this is just asking to pull those funds back from fund balance so we can complete this project.
We have a motion for that.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Aye.
Anybody got any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. All right, next is item number seven, is to request approval of budget amendment, facilities and maintenance, $4,000 to appropriate fund balance for the balance of the budgeted funds in fiscal year '25 to be used to replace all doors in Building B of the fairgrounds.
Yes, this was funds that were not spent by the end of FY '25, and there was a request to replace all the doors in Building B, and this will get us there if we appropriate the remaining $4,000 from last fiscal year with this fiscal year's funds.
Okay. Okay. I'll entertain a motion. We approve item seven.
I will make the motion to approve that item.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
The fairgrounds is a great asset to the county. That property down there bring in a lot of events that our residents enjoy, and I think certainly want to maintain that property and keep the facilities in good working order.
Okay, I'll, let's see. Sure, so did we have a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number eight, request approval of budget amendment, facilities and maintenance for $20,000 to appropriate fund balance for 911 funds approved in fiscal year '25 to be used for rewiring of the communication function of the HVAC.
Same thing. This was a project we had available funds for, but it did not get completed in FY '25. The only difference is, it was originally budgeted in the 911 function, and we're requesting to put it into the facilities and maintenance function so that Tim can oversee this project.
Okay.
That was all bundled up in that package with that system, right? It's just housekeeping?
Yeah, yeah. All of these this evening are just housekeeping. We didn't get these added to our cumulative list, so we had to bring them back individually.
Right. I'll make the motion to approve that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Item number nine is to request approval of a budget amendment, environmental health, for $16,117 to appropriate fund balance for food and lodging agreement amendment addendum for funds received in fiscal year '25 and unspent. So this is just the same?
It is the same thing. We've received these funds really late in the fiscal year, pretty much every year, so we didn't get time to spend them before they rolled back into fund balance with the close of the fiscal year.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to approve item number nine?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Item number 10, request approval of budget amendment for the sheriff, $62,978 to appropriate fund balance for the sheriff's response team equipment that was budgeted in fiscal year '25 but not deliverable until fiscal year '26. So it's the same thing?
Same thing, same story.
Okay, so can somebody make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Item number 11, request approval of budget amendment for EMS, $14,126 to appropriate fund balance for balance of Latcf grant funds received and unspent in fiscal year '25.
Kind of the same thing. We didn't get the equipment in. This is kind of similar to ARPA funds, but we were using it for EMS equipment. We didn't get that equipment in, so we need to roll those funds over.
Okay, so someone make that motion for item 11?
I'll make it.
Okay, Terry made the motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Then the last, item number 12, is to request approval of a budget amendment and solid waste for $33,200 to appropriate fund balance to recover, I'm sorry, to cover contract with Bunell Lammons for well abandonment and placement of two gas monitoring wells and two groundwater monitoring wells at the FFLF. Funds were budgeted in fiscal year '25, but project was not completed, and that's the Francis Farm landfill. So can we have a motion for that?
It's another one of those housekeeping items, Mr. Chairman, it has to be done, so, you know, by the state, we have to maintain those monitoring systems, so I will comment. The solid waste fund and the committee that's over that, they've done a tremendous job. And we have funds available for these projects to forecast that, look forward, and are prepared for these things that are coming, so I make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, that concludes that, Christian. I think that's a record, maybe. Okay, we don't have appointments or a closed session tonight. Does anybody else have anything for the board? Okay.
I will, in closing, Mr. Chairman, the group that came, and they've left, but, you know, again, those folks, as some of the other commissioners have shared, they were very open with the situation that they'd been in, and they were wanting to help people moving forward, so if we can look to that in the future, I'm sure we'll be studying it. And the one guy that came, it took me a little bit to pick up. I thought he was on with the other group. And again, believe it or not, I'm sitting within 15 feet of the speaker, and I had a hard time hearing some of the... Some, did you have trouble? So Joey, I don't know if we got problems with that microphone or what, but it took for a minute to pick up on it, but the guy had a legitimate, he had some legitimate comments. I saw a mess coming, just coming over here today, you know, people leave their trash bags unattended on the back of their vehicle, and it flies out. By the time three or four vehicles run over it, it's a mess. And I've seen those things happen. So just as far as public awareness, I think the gentleman had some very good points about securing your garbage bags as you're traveling to the convenience centers, and, you know, it might save a whole lot of people. I don't see anybody coming back to pick it up after it blows out of their vehicle, but somebody has been, and I appreciate that gentleman's effort. And that committee for a clean county that was active, I know that did provide an eye-opening situation. You learn a whole lot picking up trash. I was on that committee, and I see Zander back here. I was on that committee for four years, and it's a very eye-opening experience to pick up the trash around the county. You kind of see some trends that are not very good. And one thing to take away, the alcoholism, the emergency room visits, and Dr. Banks had a presentation, and I were here a few months ago about the emergency room visits directly related to alcohol. Something that, again, needs to be, public awareness needs to be made about this. It is a deadly poison. It will ruin your life, it'll ruin your marriage, and it's not good for society. So be very aware of these things. The data is out there for everyone to see. It's not a secret. So very, very good comments in the meeting today.
Okay, want to entertain a motion? We adjourn.
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Everybody be safe out there.